We'll call a planning board meeting to order. Those in attendance for the planning board is Bill Dwyer, myself, Jim Maximowski, Joe Zagornik, Key Shore Palmer, and Mark Dunn. And first up for general information, Mr. Dwyer?
Uh, would be Mr. Quinnlin.
All right. I'm here, uh, trying to speed this up because I know Randy's been very busy. So he said it'd be all right if I presented this if it's okay with you. Basically, um, after the last meeting when you wanted to get it, you know, more towards Cross from Moody Bridge, the actual, you know, road there, the driveway, it eliminated one of the frontage lots would move the two in the back to keep it at the three. So basically what he's done is lot one, he's taken a section off so I could, uh, build the garage, you know, abiding my property. Um, lot one, you know, has more frontage now because he had moved the road across as closely he could at Moody Bridge. The reason it's not dead center is the telephone pole right there, I guess. That is causing that. He wanted me to mention that in the lot two, he has the, um, emergency vehicle turnaround area, which it'll be on one side, but at least he gonna make sure that will be there. But at this point, he just put it on, on lot two. And lot three would be, you know, in the, in the rear there. And then of course, the parcel B would be non-buildable.
Are you able to share your screen, Tom?
I only have a copy. I just got this this afternoon from him.
Okay.
I should have had him send me it.
Let me, let me see if I can get, get it up on my end.
It would have made sense if I have to start over. That's not a big deal.
Well, it's kind of, once you start talking about more than two lots, it's, uh,
Yeah, I saw it. It was, I thought the, you know, it looks much better being across from, uh, what is that Grand Oaks or not Moody Bridge there? Yeah. Um, and he mentioned the pole and the guy wire. So, yeah.
Okay, let me see if this will work. Yeah, he did send it around to everybody. So we did get a chance to look at it, but even so. There we go.
Perfect. So you want me to start over? Probably better just quick enough?
Well, just remind us the, uh, the, there used to be two frontage lots and what, what was the non-buildable lot going to be?
I'm not sure if it was going to be, uh, this would be east or west. I'm not sure which one he had at that point, but there was just going to be one, you know, one larger one in the back and it was enough frontage to have the two, you know, A and R's in the front, basically. And then we, you know, took the chunk off, you know, to go to my property. The house number which he's got now on here, I'm 141, so 143 will work out for nine one one. And then whichever way, you know, I just done told them to go with the house one went's way and house two on the other lot went's way if that was okay with the board.
So what's the address? 143?
Lot one would be 143.
143. Okay, so we had talked with Randy about getting this on for our, which got my calendar up?
Um, October 21.
Is there any chance of something sooner? I, if, if you're, you're okay with me presenting it now, we'll get all the mailings out, whatever that limit would have to be right away tomorrow if we had to.
The earliest we could do it would be October 1st.
Okay.
Because
October 7th.
October, yeah, I'm sorry, October 7th.
Do you have room for it or?
Well, we usually do, uh, the first meeting of the month is, um, meeting with Pioneer Valley Planning Commission. But we are getting really backed up because I know that there are four, um, ground mounted, large scale, ground mounted solar applications in the room tonight. Um, so maybe we will have to talk with Kyle, uh, about whether we want to give him October off. Um, I don't know what. Any thoughts on that? Because we, we're gonna have to schedule for, um,
Large mounted solar.
We're gonna have to schedule a total of five public hearings. And Mark, you are breaking up so badly. We can't hear you.
Yeah, Mark. Yeah, Mark, it's bad.
For the fall town.
And Mark, I muted you because you were breaking up so badly. I'll unmute you now and, uh, see if we can, uh, well, actually you can unmute yourself now. Want to try again?
Can you hear me now?
That's much better.
Yeah, I was just wondering if there's anything we need to do with PVPC and preparations for the fall town meeting.
Not that I'm aware of.
I don't believe so.
But that is, we'll also have to schedule a public hearing on zoning articles. So it's going to be a busy October.
If it supports the board, I'm totally fine, uh, postponing my next update until November, whenever is more convenient.
Okay. That would probably be a good idea, Kyle.
Yes, that brings us to a total of six public hearings that we have to fit into two meetings. Okay, so that frees up, um, October
7th.
7th. Uh, so do we wanna move up, um, the very small subdivision to October 7?
Yes.
Okay. He only buys you two weeks, Tom. That's not a lot.
Well, winter's coming. I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Do you have your application in yet, Tom?
I'm not sure if Randy did. He, he was gonna take care of that part if I got the mailings done. So I'll check with him tomorrow.
Okay. So the way this is revised, this is, this is now just, it's still just a two lot subdivision. One of the lots is already existing on front on, uh, on what you call a Bay Road. That's the way you're gonna call it?
Yes.
Okay. So we'll set your public hearing for October 7th. Make sure you get the, you got the mailing labels in yet? Or you've got those in your hand?
We're gonna do it tomorrow.
Okay.
Thank you.
So I know there is a lot of overlap here. Uh, a lot, a lot of people are, uh, the other people here are teams. So, uh, I'll just call out the next name as it appears and, um, uh, everybody related to that, you know, please just identify yourself. Um, Doug Sorrell was the next one in.
Hello.
And Jake.
Yes, uh, oh, thank you, Bill. Uh, yeah, I'm also here with Jake Marley of Hyperion Systems. Um, and, uh, on a separate note, uh, Jeff Squire and, and Todd Solora. Um, for the first item, uh, first two items, uh, with Jake, uh, we are working with Jake Marley with, um, Hyperion Systems, uh, who's working with, uh, Joe, um, Kuzkowski. Um, pardon me for perennially butchering his last name. Um, we, uh, we have submitted today and are here to officially submit, uh, special permit applications for large ground mounted solar, um, proposed installations. One is a phase two that is located at 88 Shattuck Road. Uh, and the second application is at 415 River Drive, also for a large ground mounted, uh, solar array installation.
Both of those are for Joe Sakowski?
That's correct. He owns both of those parcels. Both of those are being coordinated with Jake Marley and, uh, with Hyperion Systems. Um, and, uh, us on the permitting end of the spectrum.
Hi, everyone. I'm Jake Marley from Hyperion Systems.
Okay. And each of the ones that he's going to be farming, he's gonna raise them up. So they'll be farming underneath?
That is correct. These will be ASTGUs or now DAS dual use agricultural solar tariff generating units.
It's very similar to, uh, three years ago, um, uh, we presented an application for his first phase to be done at, uh, at his address 92 Shattuck. It was on the same parcel as 88 Shattuck. Um, and that's been up and running since 2023, uh, and there's been a lot of positive uh, benefits, uh, by having the dual use there. The combined shade onsite has not slowed down commercial agriculture um, on that at all. And so we're, uh, uh, he and, uh, Hyperion Systems are wanting to expand upon that, uh, and continue that success of the dual use, uh, installation.
I think, uh, River Drive one was the one that I had the concern about the, uh, they didn't, they were asking if they wouldn't need to put some buffer plantings. And I was concerned that there could be reflections and I wanted to see a study of sun angles and such that there wouldn't be.
I've identified, um, so two studies, two, two national studies, one from the National Renewable Energy Laboratory. And I'm blanking on the other one right now. I can provide those studies and I welcome the board out, uh, to Joe's existing site. It will really be the identical equipment. Um, and in what I've recognized is there's more glare from the fenced in equipment pad from that steel than from the panels or the racking itself. The racking is galvanized steel. The panels are aluminum, uh, on the outside. I, I think the steel has more glare. Um, for the 415 River Drive project, we changed that equipment pad fence from a steel chain link fence to a wood fence to produce that glare. Um, we, we've discussed this quite a bit with Joe and we're open to more feedback on the screening, um, plan for that site, as you'll see in the plans. Um, we didn't provide much. Um, we want to open that dialogue. We spoke with some of the neighbors as well. That wasn't much of feedback, uh, that we received. There were some other areas, um, not so much related to the solar project, just existing conditions that they had concerns with, and we're trying to address those. But always open to feedback on this.
Yeah, I, I, I am not an expert on it, but I, I know at one point, one of my colleagues was saying they absorb light, they don't reflect it, but they still do. I mean, I, I have a friend who was has solar and he was on his roof and he said they were reflecting. He was like, it was awful. Um, and he got like, like burned. So I just am concerned about, you know, public driving down the road. And if you've ever, anywhere you drive and there's a parking lot, the sun just has to hit one windshield at one angle, it give you that blinding light. So that was what I was trying to prevent. So if there's no way that could happen, then great. I just wanted that to be, be, uh, be, be discussed and shown with my due diligence.
Yeah, that's an excellent question. Um, and it sounds like Jake, you've already, you guys have been dialoguing about this initially and you've done some research on this. So we're certainly, uh, you know, following Jake's previous comment, we're certainly open to, uh, comments and suggestions and, and dialogue about this and, and we'd be happy to present this. Um, when we do the formal presentation at the, at the next available hearing.
Thank you.
As far as the screening goes, I'm just going to give you my one single opinion of the planning board, one out of five. And because you're farming underneath it from a publicity point of view and from an advertising point of view, that solar can be dual use. I would like to see minimal screening hiding the solar system for the simple reason that it's, I, I would like to see it advertised that, you know, you can farm under solar. You don't have to, just because you put solar up doesn't mean you negate the use of the land. But I don't want to make that as a condition until we hear from the neighbors, everybody else.
Yeah. I like that idea as long as it's, you know, in the book interest, it's safety wise.
So I will not participate in either of these special permit decisions. Oh, it, uh, is important to be sure that the rest of you will all be available on either the 7th or the 21st. If anyone, bye, Joe. If anyone has any conflicts for either of those dates, uh, time, this is time to speak up.
The 7th should work for us, I would imagine, unless Jake, you have an issue with that.
No, I'm talking about the rest of the board.
Thank you. Sorry for that.
There, there are five members of the board. Four of us have to vote in the affirmative and I will not participate in this one. Either of these.
Special permits require two thirds majority of any board voting on an item. And so we have a five member board. So therefore, four of the five members must vote in the affirmative for this to pass. That's why.
I will be available.
We want to make sure there's four of us.
There, there might be a possibility for me not be available on the 7th, but the 21st should work.
Okay. Um, well. We'll check with Joe when he gets back, but he usually makes everything. Then I, then tentatively, I think this would make more sense to, uh, aim for the, uh, the 21st for this one, for these two.
Mr. Zagornik, are you available on October 21st for the planning board? You'll be here?
Yes.
Okay. We'll schedule it to Sakowski's, the 88 Shattuck and 415 River Drive for the, uh, 1021. Okay.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
There's one other item and actually unless, uh, Jeff Square, uh, also from my office, if you're gonna present that, I will yeah, sit back.
Yeah, you can turn off.
Great. Thank you so much. Thank you, Jake.
And Jeff, coincidentally was next one in, so, uh,
Perfect. Um, yeah, and I, I'm here with Todd Solor from Sovereign Builders. Todd, I don't know whether you want to say anything to start, um, you're on mute.
Just, uh, say hello to everyone. Todd Solor from Sovereign Builders and wanted to get some feedback on a, on a property that I have under agreement to purchase off of Middle Street and wanted to get a sense of if what, you know, the direction we're heading in, if it makes sense, uh, before I spend too much time and money going further into infrastructure design and things like that.
So this is, yeah, 40, 44 Middle Street. Um, Russell Street is just down at the southern part of this, uh, bottom part of the page. Um, this was a plan that Randy had prepared for Barry Roberts back in 2018. It never, never got endorsed, um, never was followed through with. Um, it was a subdivision of two existing parcels. Um, it included a, you know, a flag lot essentially, and then two, um, two parcels. The agreement, as I understand it, is to combine these two parcels, including this, um, pole, understanding that, um, you know, flag lots are no longer allowed. But the presumption would be that we could, um, move forward with a, a subdivision plan. Um, you know, considering the senior housing overlay district, it's in a, a pretty ideal location. And so that would likely be the, um, you know, the design standards, um, and guidelines that we would follow, but, um, really just to gauge the, the board's opinion on that, that development strategy for these, for these parcels before he signs on the dotted line, so to speak.
Okay, I, I can't see the frontage and stuff like that. So I can't give you any feedback right here.
Yeah.
Okay. So.
What's, what's the overall plan?
There isn't one yet. I mean, ideally it would be some sort of senior housing development, um, that would conform to, you know, obviously tho- those standards. Um, it would combine both, you know, lot three and parcel A. It would be one larger, you know, parcel in the back with access out onto, out onto Middle Street. Um,
Yeah, we did share, Randy shared the plan by Q and Riddle in his email, I believe, to the board. So I mean, that's
Okay, couple, couple of questions here. The lot two that's 38,100 square foot.
Mm-hmm.
Um, is, is parcel A and lot two one lot right now?
Parst two, I believe they are. Todd, I don't know whether you know about it, but I believe these are both one parcel right now.
Okay, you're in about 99% sure you're in the aquifer. So lot two has to be a minimum of 40,000 square foot with 200 feet of frontage.
Okay. With 200 feet of frontage.
Correct. Now you could use a new subdivision road as your frontage, but the house has to be 50 feet off of that road, which it's not going to be.
Even as a pre-existing condition?
Yep.
It's not a pre-existing condition here. Go ahead.
Yeah. This 50 foot right, 50 feet that you're taking, is that, where is that coming from? Lot one or lot two or combination of one and two?
Coming from lot one. Lot one is currently 230 foot of frontage overall. And so the, the thought was that both after the 50 foot would be left conforming in both frontage and area. But I, I guess, you know,
You can't make, you can't make a non-conforming lot more non-conforming.
Mm-hmm. Understand.
Okay.
Which from a standpoint, we are not proposing to make lot two any more non-conforming in terms of frontage. And the area will be conforming. So the frontage would remain the same on lot two. Uh, it's the frontage on lot one, which would then it would change, but would be conforming. But I, you know, if it's in the aquifer and it needs to be 200, then I'm, then that's not accurate.
Okay. Now, lot one, it appears you could use the new road as the frontage for lot one and make it conforming for the 200 feet of frontage. But you're taking, right now, lot number one conforms in frontage and size. And you can't take 50 feet away from the frontage unless you give it new frontage on your new street. And that would have, that road would have to be built to subdivision standards, obviously.
Sure.
Do all of that. Lot number two, you can't take away, right now, lot number two is roughly 140,000 square feet when lender. So if you take away parcel A, you lot two must have 40,000 square feet of, of, uh, land.
Okay.
So you're gonna have to move that property line back a little bit. Um, lot one will conform with, with square footage. And like I said, you just gotta make the frontage for lot number one on the new street.
Mm-hmm.
And basically you would be And basically you would be okay from a subdivision point of view for lots A and three. A parcel A and three. I'm assuming you're going to combine lot three and parcel A into one.
Correct.
Correct.
Yeah.
So from basically a subdivision point of view, you could make this work.
Okay. And each of those units would include the required frontage and, and lot area. And all the dimensional standards associated with each lot within that subdivision.
Right, yes. Now, depending on your layout, obviously you have other things to worry about. Uh, just so you'll know. When a senior housing was proposed. I don't know if it was. Maybe not even a quarter mile up the road. There was a lot of pushback from neighbors. I'm just letting you know that.
Mm-hmm.
Planning board, different story. I mean, if you conform to the zoning bylaw, um, it's a special permit, but you know, you, you could. There is, there is, how would I say this? There's space in the senior housing, because the senior housing you're proposing?
Yes.
Senior housing bylaw has room in it for this kind of a parcel.
Would it, would it, so each, each unit would it be on an individual lot? And, and what? Or, or is there such a thing as a clustered scenario?
It's not an easy answer to give you for that. But if you look at Mr. Barry Roberts' property off of uh East Street.
I'm familiar with this.
Okay, that's a senior housing. Those lots are closer together. And the senior housing bylaw has a lot of information in it. I would encourage you or Mr. Squire to, I'm sure Mr. Squire is familiar with that. He could look at and give you more information. It's not a, it's not a simple yes or no answer, if you would.
So the East Street Commons property is set up as a condominium. And so uh setbacks, the only setback requirements. For individual dwelling units within the condominium are fire code related, basically.
Okay, that, that's, and that's exact, the, the direction we were heading in was a condominium scenario over fifty five. And you know, the setback of each would be more ten feet or more for, to comply with. So we didn't have that, have to have the sides of the buildings fire rated.
So the uh, I guess the other part of the problem I see is that the uh. You're going to have to lay out your fifty foot access as a street. Um, and then. You also have to give. Lot three and parcel A, two hundred feet of frontage each on that street. So it's going to cut into what you have available. You're gonna, you know, as a practical matter, you're not going to be building it as a, as if it were a town street. You're going to be building it as if it were a driveway, but it's going to have to come in. Basically. Another two hundred feet beyond the property lines as shown for lot one and lot two. Uh, the, the street's going to have to be another two hundred feet long, uh, on paper at least. You're not going to be able to build on that. So you, you'll have to work that into a um.
Layout.
Into your layout.
Jeff, can you share the other, the, the, the drawing that Ken Riddle did so that?
That was the one that had an ellipse?
Correct.
Yes.
And that looked like it had, what was it, sixteen duplexes on it?
It, yes, that's correct.
Okay.
And, and to be honest, that's the only, you know, that level of density is what it takes to make this work. Although, you know, and if that doesn't work, then, then potentially it, it doesn't work, which is, which is um. Okay for me, but not so okay for the folks that are trying to sell it.
Yeah. Can you see this?
Yeah.
Yeah. Think, yeah, this was with Kuhn Riddle, who, you know, worked on that same E Street project.
I see one of the, one of the beauties of this parcel is its proximity to the library and to the, to the bike path. This location is, is desirable for both of those reasons.
Wonder, no, I'm not designing, but I wonder uh. Mr. Dwyer, Mr. Maximowski. Would they make this work better with all the frontage deals and all that if it was just one parcel? And there was maybe one building. Let's say they did a horseshoe shaped building with condos in it.
Well, the problem is you can't do a very small subdivision without creating at least two lines.
Right, right, right.
So um. There may be something you could do. I'm just not, not quite sure. How you're going to make it happen.
These individual houses, are they going to be duplexes?
These were duplexes, I think, Joe.
Yeah. Appears that way.
Yeah.
So you'd have thirty two units under that plan. But that's not their plan. That's the previous developer's plan, right? I think.
No, this is a recent one.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah.
So how does this do with the frontage? No?
They're going to figure it out.
Yeah.
Have to figure it out.
We're not designers, Mark.
Right, that's true.
We do allow greater density in this part of the um, the district. So. If you wanted to look at a townhouse type structure, two floors, uh, well. I'm not, again, as Jim said, we're not designers, but if there's a, a way in this that you could increase. The density a bit uh to accommodate that. That dagger through the middle of the property, um, that's potentially doable.
What's in the, in demand these days for the, the demographic is people want to live on one level. They really. Want, don't want to climb stairs. So, but you know, I guess that the workaround would be elevators. That's what we're hearing. But then there's a, you know, large cost related to that type of design, but. Baby boomers, people aging in place, the demand is especially over fifty five, they don't want to climb stairs. And I, and I understand, you know, so, so the saleability of something that's two stories is dramatically less. But obviously that's not your concern.
We did have a proposal from another potential developer to basically put in a three story building. Um, which would be. You know, not more an apartment model than a um freestanding house model. Uh, and it would require an elevator, but that, they had the density, that gave them the density they needed for their site.
Mm-hmm.
Um.
Yeah. Almost seems counterintuitive to, to the village center, but again, yeah.
Yeah.
And, and what would be sort of more in keeping with New England and so on, um, to see a three story building seems. A little counterintuitive to, to the uh rural, but actually there's obviously this village center.
Mm-hmm. And yeah, that's, that's the flip side of it, uh, which might have. Uh, certainly the product offered at East Street Commons was incredibly popular. That is something people are looking for. Um. So um.
But that was a much larger lot.
We're happy to uh work with you about. If you want to try, try some other, some variations.
We can, we can, Jeff. I think we, you know, take, take a look. I think we have a greater understanding of, of. What, you know, the parameters that we need to solve.
Yep.
Oh, just a quick. Quick notice here. Very small subdivision requires that you create two lots.
Mm-hmm.
If you, you, because you have to create lot one as a basically. I'm going to call it a new lot. Because you're, you're cutting the frontage off on Middle Street, so it's new fronted will be on this new road right here.
Mm-hmm.
That will count as one of the lots.
Sure.
Or could count. So therefore on your. Lack of a better term, your rear section, you need to create frontage on one lot. One lot. You could create one lot and you're going to somehow make frontage on it.
Sure.
Okay, um, that's, that's what you pay. Mr. Squire is modest, moderate fee for us to figure that out.
We can certainly figure that out, yeah.
But I'm just looking at that, you know, lot two is pre-existing. You just got to make sure you give it, you got to move the lot line back a little bit to give you another. You know, nineteen hundred square foot, which may or may not impact much. But um, if you create the two hundred foot, you're only going to do it for the entire rear parcel.
Sure.
So that may, that may help, you may not.
Yep.
Thank you all for the feedback. Very helpful.
Yeah, definitely appreciate it.
Okay.
Okay. Um, and Deb, I know you uh were here early, but you're on the agenda for later, so that's why I passed over you. Um. Next in was uh Sarah Stevens.
Evening, thank you. Um, Sarah Sterns with. No problem. Um, with me is Evan, my colleague Evan Connolly. And the applicant, Justin Giloff. So the, those two are with me. Um, we are here representing two um ASTGUs or dual use solar projects. Similar to what we heard a little while ago, one off of Mount Warner Road and one off of Mill Valley Road. Um, Evan and my other colleague Jackie, along with Justin, were here a couple of weeks ago, talking to the board. And gave a preliminary overview of each of the projects. Um, we did submit. Um, electronic applications last week and, you know, we're here tonight to just, you know, take the next step with the board. And discuss any logistics and um placement on the next available public hearing for these projects.
Great. Uh, we got the applications. Have, have you got mailing labels?
We do, yes.
Okay. Um, basically the way the fee works, we can't give you a fee till the newspaper let us know what your advertisement is. So once we get that, I will put the total cost on the, on the applications and mail them back to you and then you can. Pay the fees and stuff like that. In the meantime, um, if you would please get the mailing labels. Into the town hall so that we can mail out the notices and in a timely manner. Okay? And are these, are, will there be farming going on at any of these projects as well?
Yes.
Okay, so the same as the first two that we had for River Drive and that's great.
Yes. Yep.
Love to hear that.
Yeah.
Remind me what the addresses are for these.
The first one is a Plainville Farm, one thirty three A, Mount Warner Road.
One thirty three, you said?
I believe so. I have it as one thirty three A. I also have the map and lot, if that's helpful to you.
No, just, just, we want the address.
Yeah, okay. And then the second one is Parsons Farm, one forty three Mill Valley Road.
Okay.
Um, who should I direct the mailing labels to at town hall?
Uh, planning board mailbox.
Planning board.
And. Your public hearing will be October seventh.
Twenty twenty five.
I would hope so.
Great.
That, that, that date good with you?
Of course, yeah, that's excellent. Thank you. By the way, I, I appreciate this process. This is um, pretty unique. We work in a lot of communities in the state. And this is a really nice way to do it.
Yeah, that is actually um, two weeks earlier than we had initially discussed with your office. Because uh, we had to bump the other hearing, set of hearings to that date for. The right number of bodies.
Understood and appreciated. Thank you. Okay, so we'll get those mailing labels out to you and then we'll stay in contact regarding payment of filing fees and advertisements and whatnot.
Right, okay. You should have that in the next couple of days, because I'm going to get them into the newspaper in a timely manner to make it in time.
Understood. Okay, um, my colleague Jackie, who I think Bill, you've been in touch with mostly is on vacation this week. So um, please just reply all to any emails that she's been uh sending with you, just to make sure that we get. Them in her absence, if, if you think of it.
I don't think there are any open threads.
Okay. Who's taking a much needed break.
Okay. Thank. I think that's it for you then. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you so much, everybody.
Then uh, Mr. Pacwin, are you here for your part of that one?
I am here for a convenient MD, four twenty four Russell Street.
Oh, okay.
Med Express Building.
Okay. Okay, what was the address again?
Four twenty four Russell Street. It's the old Med Express Building.
Okay.
Yeah, okay.
It wasn't. Yeah, that was the one where Jim pointed out that your signage exceeded. The square footage.
That's the one. Yeah. Okay. Would have revised signage, I'm, I'm assuming?
Um, we, I'm, I'm here, um, Commissioner Scott, we met on site um, to go over what we were doing with the building. And he said that um. We should be a part of this. And then I did also receive an email from. From somebody in your off, in your, on your board saying that we needed to be there because we were over the square footage of signage, which um. Honestly, we didn't even look at, so I apologize for that, but um. We are looking to actually decrease the signage that's currently on the building. Um, only having a sign on the two main street fronts. And we're going to be getting rid of one extra sign that's on, I believe it's College Road or College Street. And one that's in the back of the building. And we're also going to be. Skating in the glass on the tower, so you're not going to see the red cross that's currently in there. Uh, so currently the building, the building currently has um, two hundred and two square feet of signage. And we're asking for a hundred and sixty square feet. Two, two signs at eighty square feet apiece.
Two twenty two?
Two oh two.
Two oh two current?
Yes.
How did that happen?
Um, I'm not sure, but I, I do have a drawing I can share for you if you want.
Yeah, I'm asking my colleagues, how did that happen?
And what is the uh, what, what are you asking for?
We are asking for a hundred and sixty square feet, two signs at eighty square feet apiece. And then we will also be doing the pylon sign that's currently out there, just replacing that in kind.
Yeah.
Can you screen share? Can you screen share to show us what you're?
Uh, I think I can. I usually don't use this program, so give me one second.
I may be able to do it from my end.
Think I might have got it.
Oh, there.
Alright. So. This is currently what's on the building, um, this top small sign, there's, there's one of those in this larger one, there's three, uh, there's two of them. So the two largers are on the street front facades and the smaller one is on the back, which I think faces. Wetlands or or woodland. And and we're not interested in that one. And we will also be getting rid of. This small urgent care sign where there's two of those as well on the front of their canopies. And we'll be shading in the glass, so you won't see their cross behind it. So what we're gonna be proposing. Is. This. Typically on our normal buildings, um, we have three-inch raised letters, um, but because we cannot have an internally illuminated sign. In Hadley, we're going with a blue background and a thinner sign with a LED light band across the top of it. And we're also doing the background so that we don't have to do the repairs to the wall and repaint the whole building where their sign is coming down from. Yes, we're, we're over what you guys allow in your ordinance, but we're hoping in the fact that we're actually decreasing the amount of signage on the building. There might be a little forgiveness.
I I didn't realize that the existing signs were that big.
Uh, they're, they're a little deceiving until you actually get them in measure.
Now, the ju- just for your information, the street sign. Is a pre-existing sign cuz we don't allow in internally illuminated street signs, but the reason. That. Is because once upon a time, there was a Pizza Hut there. The pizza had, Pizza Hut was built. Many years ago, it had an internally illuminated sign, with Med Express moved in there, they basically kept. That pylon type sign, just so they could keep it internally illuminated and that's legal and that's fine and you're gonna get the same benefit out of it.
Well, we appreciate it.
Okay, so you're.
Unless you change it or move it.
Long time ago, pre-existing non-conforming, but that's, that's the law, we're not gonna, that's fine.
Well, we, we appreciate that and all we're doing is, it'll be the same exact sign, we're just gonna put, I think I actually have a picture of it here. That's what we're going through.
Yeah, and. Like I said, I didn't realize the existing sign it was that much. And if it is and you're reducing it by. Pretty near fifty percent. I. Don't have a complaint. Okay? That's my, that's one person out of five.
Two people out of five.
Yeah, there's really no point in going back and trying to figure out what happened where uh, that was uh. Uh, at least uh. Three building commissioners ago. Uh, so.
Yeah.
Um, mistakes were made apparently, but. Uh, I, yeah, I'll, I'll. I would go along as pre-existing non-conforming, um, and the refa- the refacing would reduces the. Former amount.
That's great.
We're gonna make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve. As submitted.
Second.
Motion a second, any other discussions? Hearing none, all in favor, roll call vote.
Done, I.
Where I.
Maximaski, I.
I'm our I.
Rodicai.
Motion passes unanimously, good luck, Chris, good luck as Mister Pacquinn.
Great, I greatly appreciate it, thank you for your time.
We'll send an email to the Buildings Inspector to let him know and with copies of the plans that we approved. So you can.
Appreciate it.
He's your next stop.
Yes, sir. Guys, all have a good night.
Thank you.
Let's see.
So we have uh, PVPC and we have the Home Office Public Hearing. Um, maybe we just, I don't think we have a lot for PVPC tonight. I didn't see a lot come in from Kyle.
You can find a way if you wanna get through public hearing.
Now, let's, let's uh. One nice thing here, you can tell who's in the room, uh, the only, the only person for the public hearing is the applicant. So um, we don't have a room full of. Questioning uh, townsfolk, so. Um. I'd say let's, let's talk to Kyle first and send him home to his family and then we'll move on to the public hearing.
Very good. Okay.
Appreciate that, gentlemen, um. Yeah, so um, not too much tonight uh, to discuss in terms of the Planning Board Assistance Work Program. Uh, we've made some progress with our standard conditions, thanks to the great uh. Uh, support of Kayla. Uh, she's given us a new uh, version to start building off of, so. I've got some language to find regarding. Some erosion control and just to verify some dates in terms of the, the length of special permits, uh, so that next iteration will be coming back to Mister Dwyer this week. And then we should be able to get that uh, closer to complete. So that we can include that in a. Public hearing for Planning Board Rules and Regulations, probably later towards the winter time cuz you all are very busy. In terms of the remainder of this work plan for the Planning Board Assistance. I've started outlining a uh, an assessment report for your parking requirements. Um, I think at this point, I'm curious because I think you're interested in seeing some comparisons with regulations that other communities have adopted. And I'm trying to create some criteria to uh, direct me to good sources of comparison. So I'm thinking to look at. Uh. Communities with similar population sizes and similar uh, commercial corridors along state roads, particularly uh, two intersecting state roads. To see what communities have done to set um, parking standards in their business, commercial districts or industrial districts. I'm curious if there is a shortlist of communities you. Want to name that you would like me to look into, or if you would like to add criteria. That I need to include as I search for uh, communities to kinda do some research on. I'd welcome that right now.
I honestly have no idea. On recommendation for that one, Kyle, because. Um. Only ones that I'm aware of that have real decent parking requirements are pretty much bigger cities and towns. I haven't seen, I mean, and I haven't looked a lot, so I like, I'm, I'm not speaking from any wealth of knowledge on this.
You might look at uh, at Deerfield, I think they have uh, an interesting mix of. Commercial. Um, and I know they, they're, they have recently been going through an exercise with the uh, Treehouse Brewing Company. About um, managing um, events there and and parking.
Yeah.
Um. The one thing that I, I, I don't know if anyone else has noticed this, but um. You've had the same parking standard for a while. Yet some parking lots are. Appear to be much easier to navigate than others. And I was thinking that the Stop and Shop Parking Lot. Um. Always seems to have. Adequate room to open your car doors, they have a um, they have a double line between each space. Whereas. Built to the same standard, the uh, parking area in front of Jersey Mike's. Um. Seems a little frantic, um. It's uh, just seems tighter. Uh, even though it's built to the same standard and likewise, the inner part of the uh, Mountain Farms Mall or Hampshire Mall for that matter. Uh, doesn't seem as tight, but. Comparatively, that um, that area does seem tight, so um. We've been told that we're the only community, most people are, most people who come in have never dealt with a community that just has a raw square footage. They have uh, they count parking spaces. And have different counts for different uses.
Right, so. And and the minimum parking size, which we don't, do we list a minimum parking size or that's up to the user?
Do not, we do not list the minimum parking size, the only place we mention. A parking size is in the Transfer Development Rights, but it just says that when you uh, add additional parking. This is the size space you shall use, but as far as the zoning requirement for, for parking area. We have no size for parking, parking space.
Yeah. Yeah. Ten by twenty is good when we go to all the SUVs, but if we go to little hybrids, maybe nine by eighteen is. But yeah, we don't specify, so.
And maybe that would be something that almost, I, I would say uh, not North Hampton Downtown because they don't require parking anymore. But um.
Really?
At least in the downtown business district, if you wanna build down there, you do not have to provide parking. But I think that's because they're trying to steer business to their parking garage.
Correct.
Um. I'd say mo- any community, not, not the smaller, not the small less communities, but uh. Any of the mid-sized communities might have something that'd be informative.
Yeah, that, that's a helpful um, lead. Bill, I'll look to Deerfield and other communities.
Long Meadow, East Long Meadow.
Yeah, yeah, that's what, that's kinda what I was thinking uh, in our region. Um, thinking about communities that have, you know, um, a lot of commuters, a lot of, you know, kind of. Phases of daily traffic, heavy use, early mornings, late evenings. East Hampton, East Hampton's kind of a different animal cuz it's larger. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, East Hamptons, well, yeah, a little bit more complicated, but. Um, but also something that I want to include in this assessment is, you know, I do wanna include some notes on forty R. And. What parking tends to look like in those districts as well, because that's. Uh, a significant part of the district, um, Smart Growth Zoning District Regulations. And placement of parking is uh, encouraged. Uh, in the rear. Primarily or on the, in the side, to the side of any building, so. Um. East Hampton might be a good. Reference point, just because they also have smart growth zoning, so we can also look at how they. Balance or tweak their kind of standard regulations in their smart growth zones. So if, if it's alright with the board, I'll push forward with this task, I'll start doing my research and if you're not expecting me in October, that gives me a good amount of time to. Get underway with this task and get pretty far along with it. Um. And I will keep you all abreast of that. I think um, the next item that we have uh, on this year's Planning Board Assistance Work Program is. Um, Master Plan Implementation. I had shared uh, back before the. August meeting, the implementation table as it stands. Uh, and there is a mention of, you know, this is likely gonna be a much larger series of conversations that the Planning Board may wanna explore, given that. The master plan applies to so many. Uh, boards, committees and departments in the town. So. Uh, I'm gonna start working on a uh, um, a different version of the table that may be a little bit more supportive and updating and kind of tracking the status of different items. Uh, and then I'll be coordinating with Mister Dwyer uh, to show some references how we've. PVPC in years past or even ongoing, we support our communities to implement their master plan implementation. Uh, actions. Because that could be a DLTA request for the calendar year twenty-six, so it's District Local Technical Assistance, which it's been, I think, a year or two since the. Hadley has received a grant. Uh, so I'll circle back to that in the coming months. Uh, and get that ready for winter work. Uh, I think the remaining questions, topics I'd like to field with the Planning Board tonight, uh, really pertain to the forty R work. Uh, our work with the Smart Growth Steering Committee. We've started working on the bylaw, looking at uh. These. Re. Permitted uses, uh, primarily looking at permitted uses and uh, discussing a little bit. Uh, the dimensional or density requirements of those uses. I believe that the Steering Committee is in agreement and I think the outstanding question they have for the Planning Board is just to. Um, clarify or to confirm your position. The Steering Committee really wants to ensure that any development has a residential component. So that means. Yeah, if you're using the forty R overlay, you are using it to introduce some. Housing, that was, that was our intent, but we wanted to see if the whole board agreed with that. Right.
But. But Mark, is, does that mean? Housing only, for example, uh?
No, it could be mixed use, it could be, right.
Okay, that's.
I mean. Want them to use. The forty R overlay. To do something other than housing, you know, there's an underlying district, if, 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 if that works, do that, but if you're doing, if you're gonna use our overlay. We thought it should have housing, unless there's something that you can see that we didn't see.
I, I don't quite understand, so you're saying that if you have a forty R district. And you do anything in that forty R district. Housing must be included?
No, I, I think what they're saying is that forty R comes with its own set of. Guidelines and rules, that you can't use those guidelines and rules for commercial development only.
Without. A housing component.
I, I know if there's a over, if there's a fundamental. Bylaw or. Guidelines. And you just wanna do commercial, then you just follow those.
Then you just follow the base district.
You can't take advantage of the forty R program without housing included, otherwise you default to the regular guidelines of the zone, the base zone.
I, I always thought that was a given, that if you did forty R, it had to be include residential.
And that's what we thought.
Right.
That's the case.
Right, so you can, you can write into the Smart Growth Zoning Bylaw. Non-residential. Uses, step, so a, a project that would be, that would include zero residential. So, I think, I think, yeah, I think given that. The forty R zone is technically um, kind of optional to a developer. And given that the Smart Growth Steering Committee is imagining these districts really just being on. Either strictly a business zone or a mixture of business industrial. They see, I don't see a value. In allowing for those uses that are permitted by right, I, I, or by special permit within the base zone. There's no real value to have those non-residential uses permitted.
Okay. I mean. In one, my, again, my point of view, I always thought forty R was a given residential use. And you're, and you're saying that you have found, for lack of a better term loopholes. Where you could use forty R for something other than residential.
Yeah, yeah, if it's written within the bylaw, so again, you know, it's, if it's not written explicitly, it's not permitted.
My, my two cents and again, the one, one person, if it's forty R, it must be residential, if you, if you use the forty R. Bylaw.
Yeah.
Passes, otherwise you just use the underlying district for whatever.
Yeah, right, I guess what Kyle's saying is we have to explicitly write that in whatever we create.
It, it's fine, I mean, if, if, like I said, if they. Because I always thought it was a given, but if it. Because I always thought it was a given, but evidently it's not, then yeah, put that into the bylaw because we don't want to. If you, for lack of a better term, abuse forty R.
Right. The only way I was able to imagine that this would have any benefit would be, let's say. Instead of doing a mixed use with commercial on the bottom and residential on top. You wanted to do them side by side and they were going to be on two parcels, so you're doing our our kind of end fill. And your your work live is side by side, but then it would probably be on the same parcel, so I don't. I don't see how that would benefit.
But but Mark, just one one comment, uh I have a go to the eye surgeons in Amherst that's across from uh. The the Chinese restaurant and the intersection of Route Nine and University Drive.
You drive south, yeah.
Yeah, the, so they have their offices on the uh ground floor. And also the apartments are above.
Oh, yeah.
But it also blends in with the parking discussion in as much as that they have reserved places for. Uh people visiting the doctors.
Right.
So uh. So it's it's a little bit more complicated, but nevertheless, it does make sense, plus it doesn't destroy. The business base that we like to protect for town space, so.
Yeah, we're trying to encourage mixed use. Um that's one of the things that we wanted to write into the the bylaw to encourage that. It's kind of an old practice that's gone away, where you and your family would live above your. Your haberdashery or whatever it was that your business was. And it's kind of gone into a separation of bedroom communities and work communities and. Now we're kind of coming full circle, saying, well, maybe it's not such a bad idea in some cases, so.
In our area, Mark, you know, the uh the gorilla in the room is the University of Massachusetts, so. In families, uh we're talking, these will probably be catering to students. As most other developments are. No, it can be dealt with to some extent, but I don't think we could do it on a zoning basis. Oh, you could not, that's that's where I'm going. Yeah, the one in Sunderland uh is a good example. We probably can, can we require a mix of residential uses, like one bedroom, two bedroom studio?
There there would be a requirement within their, the forty R affordability provisions. There is a requirement for a certain number of, I believe, three bedroom plus, and that's to encourage families. Over individuals or couples. You cannot age restrict anything in a forty R development. So you can't say that it's senior, strictly senior housing, but there will be some intersection of this rural senior housing overlay. So that's still an option for folks that want to develop. Um I think, I think actually both districts, so the the steering committee is imagining two. One in kind of the middle street, Route Nine Village Center, which we're just calling the West. And one closer to the town line with Amherst, we're just calling that East. So I think both of them will intersect with the senior overlays. So that's still an option, you know, I don't think that will necessarily preclude or discourage that type of development.
Yeah, we're 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 talking about kind of an east and west, where east is more in the commercial. Uh malls area and could be taller and the west would be more. Re- residential sized and um. You know, and if if the 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 texture of the surrounding area in the. Town's center, so you wouldn't want a three or four story there, whereas you might. Allow a four story over by the, in, you know, in the industrial or commercial areas.
Give some information for Kyle, Kyle mentioned the three bedroom possibility. Kyle, there's, I'm familiar with a house on uh. It's North Maple Street. Uh three bedroom house, pretty nice house. Has some students in it. Just take a guess, what do you think the rent per month in that house is? Well, Mark, you can take a. I'll I'll tell you, I'll tell you the answer, the answer right away is, it's a thousand dollars a month a bed. So with three bedrooms, two students in. Per bedroom, you've got six students, six thousand dollars a month. So if we don't try to sell this as being affordable, because it's not going to be affordable.
Yeah, the the affordability piece we haven't gotten into in depth, that's hopefully going to be on our next agenda. Parking, I think, is will be fairly straightforward uh for the conversation, or we may just kind of. Keep it on pause while we complete a a more thorough assessment of. What is currently required in town and what may be of interest to the board. But um we haven't gotten too in-depth in the affordability piece of the conversation. I think of the remaining kind of dimensional uh. Topics to discuss, I'm I'm waiting to hear back from the fire chief, I did reach out. Because the steering committee is kind of on the fence with the height, the maximum building height. For the east district as that. Subd- that district will kind of overlap both business and industrial zones. Um the industrial maximum building height, I believe, is fifty feet or four stories. I don't know if there's any existing building that is that tall and hadly, but.
Maybe the immersion school, how tall are they?
Yeah, but they, it's it's three stories, not four stories, but sometimes the the. Air conditioners and other uh. Kind of utilities can be on the roof and makes it a little higher, but uh. Yeah, the four-story building is the Chinese immersion school and unfortunately, they get a. Get out of jail free card by being an educational institution.
I'm, there may be some confusion there, Joe. My review of the bylaw table, dimensional table says four stories or and fifty feet. In the industrial zone, so.
Well.
I think I think we just need to clarify with the chief, uh this, the steering committee wanted to know his opinion.
Industrial zone, okay.
Right, yeah.
Okay.
We, the the steering committee was in agreement that we wanted to keep the western zone. As similar to the surrounding um kind of rural residential agricultural residential. Dimensions and kind of density. So there are requirements within forty R to allow more dense, single-family homes, but. They're not going to be much bigger in terms of maximum height or um. Uh you know, they'll be closer to the road and like, uh but uh hopefully not too too large. It's really just the massing and kind of the the density that is, it would be a change. For the base zone. I don't know if I have any other topics to bring to the planning board. Uh Mark Kishore, correct me if I'm wrong, if there's anything outstanding, the steering committee was curious about.
No, that's the question I have on my list.
I think one one topic I'm, I would like to do a little bit more research and maybe circle back with the planning board, at least. Bring some more information to the steering committee is. You know, I I know that there's um. Uh an outstanding and long-lived question about um students in. Taking up hu- uh housing opportunities in Hadley. And I'm curious what the uh inclusion of. A manor house style of housing would do for that, I don't know, you know, that's typically. A a a larger Victorian style or colonial style house that's been kind of divided into. Five or six, you know, individual um dwellings in the same structure. Uh I don't know if that's uh something that would be of interest to the steering committee, I don't. Recall including it.
If there was some, there was, it was. One of the things at the public um feedback meetings, that was one of the things that some people had interest in, but I think. If I, not to put words in Joe's mouth, that could easily become an animal house.
Right, I I think uh. I have a note here, I think what we need to do is, the the regulations for forty R have a very simple. Um definition of multifamily as any dwelling with four or more units. And that's it, that's all they say, so I think. We may want to tease that apart with the steering committee to say, you know, what what is, what is the appropriate. Definition of multifamily for Hadley? And are there kind of subcategories of that broader concept?
From one point of view, I would not be in favor of specifically designing something for UMass students. UMass, U- UMass, like a manor house, UMass has done a horrible job of providing for their students over the last fifty years. And it would, they dropped the burden on the surrounding communities. And I don't think Hadley should be worrying about supplying housing for UMass students. If they, UMass can't support it, then Hadley should not be looking to do anything. To by any way encourage that kind of structures.
Agreed.
Yeah, I I don't think manor houses fit into the fabric of what we're looking for anyways, regarding forty R, that's just, again, just my opinion.
Right, I, yeah, we we're looking for affordable housing. Under that broad definition and, you know. That's where I think they should, you, they should, the forty R committee should be concentrating. On truly doing something like that to make housing more affordable for people, families.
So so this is one, one thought um that the steering committee was in agreement with, and I wanted to share it with the planning board. Um they would like to see the conversion of single-family homes to do to duplex or two-family. Regardless of construction date in both zones. Currently, a single-family conversion to two-family is permitted. But only for buildings that were constructed prior to February nineteen sixty-one in town.
Currently, under the current zoning bylaw, under current state bylaw of ADU, any building in Hadley can be converted to an ADU. Regardless of date of construction, you're only, you're only limited by size of the ADU. So I think that's been pretty well addressed.
No, that's that's, that's a permitted use for an accessory dwelling, but that's not considered a multifamily, it's not considered a two-family structure. So I think it would, it would impact the assessment value of the, of the, of the building, it would create two. Principal dwellings of of equal value. And it would, yeah, I don't, I don't think it's necessarily the same thing, Jim.
Okay, I would, I, I I this is not the place to be disagreeing on that. I won't see the value of allowing any building to be converted to an accessory, a two, a full multifamily dwelling. Um I mean, you're you're, I I don't think in the town of Hadley, that would be a good idea in its relation to UMass. You're gonna, you're gonna encourage way more students moving into these structures. And being built. If you don't put a size limit on it, uh I think, I'm, my my two senses, the ADU. Addresses in a reasonable manner, multi-two-family dwellings. Either connected or unconnected, and to a current blanched conversion. Could be a nightmare long-term.
Yeah, I came in late on the last meeting, uh Kyle, did. Did Randy have something he was. Expressing on that matter, or was it, no?
My recollection is that he was generally in favor of the conversion of a one fam- a single family to a two-family.
Yeah, okay, well, we can circle back to that.
And that could be debated as a standalone issue, there there aren't that many, I would think, existing. Dwellings in the forty R area anyway.
I think this is town-wide, Mr. Dwyer.
Yeah, that's what, what, yeah, and I I'm not sure, so I'm not sure where it's coming, but I don't, wouldn't, you know, it's fine in the. In the forty R to have duplexes, sure, but uh. Yeah, I would be leery opening uptown wide. Beyond, the governor is already done with ADUs.
Fair enough. I will uh do a little bit of analysis uh and try to see if there are. How many existing single-family homes even would be in these kind of. Proposed areas, we haven't really delineated those just yet, but I can kind of draw a large bubble and get a. Get a rough estimate. And see if it's even worth including. Um but that's, I think, really all the topics that we've discussed at this point. Again, we're trying to press ahead and move beyond permitted or uses. Thank you for the clarity and we'll make sure to write the bylaw to require residential. Uh either as a standalone development or as part of a mixed-use development. And next we're gonna look at parking to some degree and the affordability question.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So we'll see you in November.
Yes, that's November fourth, I've noted.
Yeah, right. That is correct.
Fantastic. Right, gentlemen, thank you.
Hey, thank you.
There are no elections this November, are there?
No, there are no Hadley or statewide elections. There are elections, there will be an election in Northampton, but.
Yeah.
It's only um.
Okay.
Every two years.
Yep, that's what I thought.
Oh, and the other part of it is, we could have a meeting anyway, we can have a special.
We we could meet with PVPC, we just can't have a public hearing.
Got it, okay.
Deborah Robes, the legal notice, as it appeared in the Gazette. The Hadley Planning Board will conduct a Zoom public hearing on Tuesday, September second, twenty twenty-five, beginning at six forty-five PM. Purpose of the hearing is to review for special permit the application of Deborah Robes. And Jennifer O'Brien for a home business at one thirty-six Middle Street, practicing attorneys. Plans are available by emailing planning@hadleMA or visit town clerk's office during normal business hours. And published twice in the Gazette, August twenty-second and twenty-eighth. And Deborah Robes, you're it?
Good evening, I'm, I guess I'm pretty much here to answer questions, is I'm hoping to have to a home office with just me, not multiple attorneys. Um as, and I would be the only employee, so not a lot of traffic and, you know. Plenty of parking off off the road. So it shouldn't, you know, impact anything along Middle Street except for, you know, traffic coming and going from my. So it shouldn't, you know, impact anything along Middle Street except for, you know, traffic coming and going from my. Residence.
This was the former home business of Handyman Hank when he lived there. So it has been, it was a home business before this. But every, every time, under the bylaw, every time a home business changes hands or changes ownership, whatever you wanna call it. Um, it must be reapproved, so.
And this has a main house and a separate building slightly behind it, is that right?
It has um a large garage slash barn in the back, which I would not be using as the business, the business would be in the. The house itself.
Here.
Any questions for the board?
Do we need to show the plan or it's, I think we all know it, right?
Well, the only people here are the planning board and.
So there's no opposition, yeah.
Yeah, I have, I have had zero requests for copies.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um.
Sounds like smooth sailing.
We just got a proposed sign in today, and I sent it around to everyone.
Yes.
Two by, two by three. And I'm, I'm aware that I have to have a ten foot behind the sidewalk.
Was there a two by two thing that we had made before when the guy on?
That was the limit and we increased it.
Okay.
Yeah, the. The new.
It's two by three, good, good, cuz I thought two by two was small.
Yeah, be hard to read.
Yeah.
I think I might have figured out how to share if you want me to do that.
Go ahead.
Let's, uh, I'll try.
Was that the size of your sign?
Uh, the picture of the sign.
Well, picture the sign, okay.
So that, that is the, the sign that I have. Obviously, if that's an issue, then I will have to. Do something else.
That's what you're putting on the road or on the property towards the road?
Yes.
Okay.
And probably not illuminated cuz you're probably not open at night?
Correct. I don't wanna encourage that.
No. You could be like Marquis Salomon.
I'll take a pass on that.
It's good to me. Of course, those could be uh eight inch clavers, but I don't think so.
What would surprise me?
So, uh, I can run through the checklist quickly. Uh, this comes under the heading of a home business. Uh, which is a profession that could be conducted entirely within the principal structure by a bona fide resident. It could have employees. Uh, limited the size and scope, does not cause visible impact such as traffic, parking, noise, pollution. Does not have any demand, utility demand, which is uncharacteristic of residential property. And won't produce a negative impact on the neighborhood. Incidental and secondary to the residential purpose. Does not give an outward appearance of a business except as signage. Only one per property, conducted by the principal practitioner who occupies the main residence. As her bona, uh, main building is her bona fide residence. No more than two other persons, full-time, part-time, or temporary engaged in the occupation. Not more than forty percent of the gross combined floor area of the main building. Or more than four hundred square feet total, whichever is less. How big is your space?
Ten by twelve.
Okay, that's less than four hundred.
Yeah, yeah. Maybe a little bigger, maybe it's fifteen by twelve.
One sign per lot may be established. And the. Either attached to the structure. Or if at a street location, top of the sign, a mounting pole must not exceed seventy-two inches above ground. Ten feet back from the property line, not illuminated. Incidental goods may be offered for sale from the premises if the special permit allows it, and I would say that's not applicable. Hours of client visits expressly stated in the special permit, in no case shall the hours extend earlier than eight A M or later than nine P M.
That would work for me.
Okay. Uh. Uh, hours and frequency, uh, there'll be no regular deliveries of products, um. Not in an accessory structure. And. No obnoxious odors, no excessive noise. No storage or use of hazardous material in excess of normal household quantities. Client parking should be a maximum of two vehicles per lot. Um. You don't need to store a heavy vehicle. Um. Or construction equipment. Or anything else. Um, no vehicle except for personal use of the homeowner shall be permitted in the front yard setback. And. Outdoor lighting is shielded, there's no new outdoor lighting, so that's not applicable.
Yeah, if you can take your sign down.
You're a share, yeah.
Yeah. Uh, not a flag lot, um. And we don't have renewals anymore. All special permits for home businesses are not non-transferable and are issued to send applicant for a specific home business. Okay. So the motion is to grant your application for a home business special permit. Based upon the following findings, um. Work is in harmony with the general purpose of the bylaw, not detrimental to the future, established or future character of the neighborhood. Work will be conducted uh in accordance with the papers you have filed. Um. For your office and sign. Um. Home business is clearly incidental, only one home business per residential property, not more than forty percent, only one sign. Um. And is not illuminated, uh, no incidental goods sold or created on site. Uh. Hours of client visits, eight A M to nine P M, no deliveries of product. Not in an accessory structure. Uh, did, no noise in excess of household noise, no sort, storage of hazardous material. Clients parking offs, uh. And site. Uh, no heavy vehicle.
It's an apologize, but as an attorney, you're used to long boilerplate.
Well, you know, once upon a time, these decisions were one page long. And then um someone, some, a few someones uh would um. Say, well, you didn't say I couldn't do it in the decision, yeah, but the bylaw says you can't do it, well, I didn't know that, so. Have to go uh on uh.
Explicitly.
Uh, non-transferable, uh, that's not applicable, I'm, I'm actually cutting out quite a bit. The changing your landscaping, no light. Approval of other boards if and as required, including the Conservation Commission, the Board of Health, the. Um, Water Commissioners Board of Select, uh, Select Board, um. And any project changes directed by other boards must be approved by the planning board. The applicant and or owner is responsible for ADA compliance. Uh, applicant is responsible for fire code compliance, um. It's it? That's the motion, I'll second the motion.
On thirty. Motion the second, any other discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote?
Done, I.
Dwyer, I.
Max Maskey, I.
Carmar, I.
Legradnick, I.
Motion passes unanimously, good luck.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for your patience, Dan.
So I will get, get this written up in the next little while. It'll be filed with the town clerk, then the notice of decision goes out to the abutters again, just as the notice of hearing did. And uh, they have twenty-one days to appeal.
Okay.
Um, given uh that um, there have been, there's no one here and no one has inquired. Uh, you're free to proceed at your own risk to occupy your home office.
Okay, appreciate that.
What, what, what is your lawyer specialty?
Uh, mostly real estate and simple estate planning.
Yeah.
And not hardened criminals coming this.
The chance to get a little bit of free advertising for people to listen in, that's all.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll take whatever I can get.
Mister Dwyer, the, the twenty-one days starts from the day you issue that.
Day the.
Not today.
Decision's filed with the clerk, which will be maybe this week, maybe next week.
And not the day that they receive their mail, but when it goes to the clerk, got it?
It goes to the clerk.
Yep. Mm-hmm, blah.
Thank you, shade all your help.
Thank you.
Hope you have a good night.
You're too.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, we do have one bill to pay. Planning Board stipend for the third quarter of this year, ending the end of September, five hundred seventy-five dollars. Total.
I'll make a motion to pay uh stipend to five seventy-five.
Second.
Motion second, any discussion? None, roll call vote?
None, no, no, I mean, I.
Dwyer, I.
Max Maskey, I.
Carmar, I.
Rodnick, I.
Motion passes unanimously, you're a big pay. A hundred dollars each, actually big pay, Bill gets twenty twenty-five and I get one fifty, the rest of you get one hundred. This quarter, so yeah, we're big, big pays here.
Us, us minions, yes.
Yep, it's like.
Right. We're gonna discuss any of the zoning article, I didn't, I didn't get a chance to put anything out, I will get it out for the next meeting in October.
Uh, I don't think, um. We, we certainly um can talk about, I, I, I don't think we have anything on for our next meeting.
Oh, that's right, okay, yeah, oh, uh, we do. We do have the continuation of Seven Brew Coffee if they ever come back to us.
Is. So Kayla, were they supposed to go to the Conservation Committee this month or?
Oh, they, 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 they. Conservation Committee, they, I have seen that crew out, people out there on that parcel. I mean, I don't travel route night every day, but I have, the, the few times I have seen them out there. I've seen as many as four or five people walking a property with maps and pointing and. I don't know what they're discussing, but it's a, it's a bit of a difficult parcel to develop because of the. Closeness of the surroundings and the wetlands and everything else, so I believe. What, Kayla, when is their wetlands or the conservation hearing on that?
Uh, well, they're gonna come to us for about maybe like a third or fourth time next week. But it doesn't seem like they'll be ready to close out, so it'll probably be continued again until they can figure out a solution.
Okay. So, we may, my guess is they may not even come to us and. Uh, if you go, when you, if they do come to you, Kayla, just please remind them that they are scheduled for next, our next meeting with the planning board. Um, just so if they, they could at least give us an update on what's going on.
Will do.
Thank you.
I think you go to the hot chicken location.
Is that still constructing?
There, there's another interesting one.
Uh, the safe is still there, I, I forgot what it was, but I looked at it closer, I think it's the old bank safe is still up, so.
They, they've taken a building down, the old pad is there. And nothing is really going on on the, the, the day's hot chicken since early this summer.
Hmm.
So.
So maybe there is one thing that um, just wanna get your sense of. The um, current ADU regulations do seem to, and, and this ties into um. Both future discussion topics and modification of the ADU bylaw. Um, the ADU regulations seem to sa- seem to say that. That an ADU is an accessory use and could be as placed as close to the property line as any other accessory use. And we have had an exception for accessory uses. Letting them be um, what, ten, fifteen feet from, or ten feet from the boundary or something?
Fifteen, fifteen feet side, well, everything at fifteen foot from the side irregardless. And it's a, a, a principal dwelling is forty foot rear, fifteen foot for accessory.
Okay, so, um. One thought that came to mind is we could uh. Define accessory structures under a hundred square feet. And accessory structures over a hundred square feet and give them different setbacks.
You know, we may wanna go a little more than one hundred, maybe wanna go something like two hundred because there's a lot of these lo- little sheds that they put out. That are actually ten by twelve, so.
That's what I, I was thinking the same thing.
So if we even clear the two hundred feet, that's still a, a sizable accessory structure.
Yeah.
And, um.
I'm thinking about one myself, so, yeah.
So.
EDU or accessory structure?
To put my lawnmower out of the, out of the, out of the elements. That would be an accessory structure.
Now, someone mentioned that there is a. There is a size below which you do not need a building permit?
Yes, yeah, yeah, I don't know what that size is.
Under two hundred or something.
And it's, a lot of those are put literally inches on the property lines.
I think it's uh. Ten by twelve actually, or ten by ten, uh, Tommy was here, he would have known, but it's, it's. Yes, you don't need a building permit for small, like ten by ten structures.
Yeah, so that'd be another way to word it, that structures that do not require a building permit.
Mm-hmm.
Are small accessory structures and other accessory structures, large accessory structures.
Hmm.
Um, I don't know, we could talk about it next uh in two weeks.
That's, that's sort of a good idea.
We, we will have the um, the amendment to the uh current bylaw on anyway. So, um. We'll have to get that uh, that queued up for a public hearing at some point, probably, and uh. I, I believe that the. The actual, the true special town meeting, the fall town meeting, general fall town meeting is.
That gonna be October or November?
October, tentatively October thirty. Or maybe November sixth.
In thirties, is it that Halloween or the thirty-first is Halloween?
Thirty-first is now.
Okay, alright. Okay, alright.
It's mist of night. That's what we used to call it in Jersey.
Just remind everybody that might be listening. September ninth is the special town meeting for the two overrides. So if you are interested and have opinions, please show up for the town meeting and vote your conscience.
Seven P M.
And if you're not familiar with them, you can go to the Hadley Media YouTube website and watch the forums. That were carried out.
The special town meeting vote, we.
I just lost.
Yeah, Jimmy just froze up.
It's like Joe froze too.
Him froze. It's just neurotic drive must.
Yeah, Jim's still talking.
We lost you, Jim.
It will then go to a ballot vote.
We, we only got the last three seconds of what you said.
The special town meeting requires a two thirds majority vote. If that gets two thirds majority vote, there will then be a ballot question yet to be scheduled. And the ballot question requires a majority of the vote.
Okay.
Although we might wanna check that, um. This is not, uh, a, oh, um, you need two thirds to borrow, which, uh. I'm not sure if you need two thirds just to, uh.
An override?
Just to do an override.
I'm pretty sure that the law says two thirds vote for two and a half override, but again, I could be wrong, I'm. I'm, it, the first question for the two and a half million. I'm most positive it was two and a half. I mean, uh.
Two thirds.
Well, the second one, the second override, I don't think is a permanent override, it's a one time override, isn't it?
Yeah, yes, I think so.
So that one may not be, require the two thirds. I don't know.
We, we, we can't really, we have to, we don't have to find the answer. Uh, the moderator and town council have to figure this one out because we have. As best I can recall, we have never or, we've never approved an operational override. And I think we may only have sought an operational override once.
Yeah. I think that's true, but regardless, whether it's two thirds of majority, if you're interested, you have. A feelings of, an opinion on the override, show up on September ninth.
Yes, there are no proxies or mail ins for the town meeting leg of the, uh, vote, you have to be there.
Yep, this is a live vote only on, on site. Is that true, Bill? Yes, somebody said they, uh. Down the town meeting votes are live.
Okay, there's early voting for the ballot question. Oh, I could not for town meeting.
Right, because the articles could be modified on the floor, so.
Anyway. On line September ninth, please show up. Um, I have nothing else.
Yeah, just looking quickly, I have nothing else, uh, I haven't, uh. I have not he, I have not heard back directly from town council on the question I posed about. What is an extended stay hotel? Uh, but I believe that town council has been in touch with the Z B A. And the Z B A is going to put it on for a, um, a hearing on a, a vote to. Make a finding. Um, and I also have not heard anything from town council on pending litigation, uh, the battery storage, um. I did go to the, uh, Superior Court, uh, docket site today. Uh, there's been no, no new entry on the court docket since January in this one, so. We do not need to hold the executive session. There is nothing to discuss.
Okay.
Good.
Okay, more, I have one more thing on my list, if it's okay. If you're. Uh, on Southeast Street, coming north up to Route nine, Russell Street.
Yes.
Would have East Tented Savings Bank on your right and the new dentist office on your left.
Yes.
Um, inside their, their construction fence, because that old house was very close to the street. Their construction fence is out pretty far and their. Um, topsoil pile is growing a lot of weeds and blocking the view, I was wondering if we. If there's someone we can ask to have them. Trim the weeds to help the safety for the visibility as you're approaching that intersection because. You can turn right on red, but you can't see if people are coming with all those weeds. Billion Inspector?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I believe he can ask to have the site cleaned up.
Okay, so I can send an email to him?
Yeah. And that's, that's simply a matter of cutting the weed, they don't have to really do much of anything, just gotta. You know, with a weed whacker.
Yeah.
Okay.
Hello, do you know his, his email?
Uh, it's, um. His name's Kyle Scott, it's Scott K.
Okay.
At hadleyma.gov.
Okay, okay, great. So I am.
Anybody else have anything? Hearing done. Motion to adjourn. And second, all in favor, roll call vote.
Done, aye.
Dwyer, aye.
Maximaski, aye.
Carmar, aye.
Radic, aye.
Thank, good, meeting is, that is, yeah, vote, vote is unanimous, meeting is history. Thank you, Kayla, thank you, Scott, good night, everybody.
Thank you, having you.
Good night.
Good night.